Of the Personnel Committee, appreciate everybody being here. To just jump right in, I wanted to first, and I'll start by, you know, cut me off, come in, I'm welcome to thoughts, and this is the first time for me on this, so any suggestions are welcome. But wanted to just touch on the role and responsibility of the Personnel Committee. We have this, I'll pass this out, this was what we circulated back in one of our earlier meetings.
I've got, actually, I ran myself.
You have yourself.
Well, no, I three-hole punched it.
So two fall meetings, obviously, have now been one winter, or two winter meetings because of timing, which I do apologize for. We have the next meeting on the calendar, but I'll get to that shortly. So the point of kind of roles and responsibilities is for us as a group to discuss yes, no on some of these things, you know, pull some of them forward into our January meeting, and then have things to take to the full board meeting at the end of January. So just kind of going down the list, reviewing the previous year's annual review process for the Director. I have that as well, I know some of you guys look like you already printed it out, these were the goals that we had over last year. Do you have this one?
Yeah, I do, I think you have.
Do you have this one? Do you guys have this one?
I have.
Trish, you got this one? One of the things that, you know, when we look at the goals, well, I'm probably getting ahead of myself, I have Director's goals for, let's just, anything, as we go, I'm gonna hold on to goals. Anything on this Personnel Committee sheet that we feel is, you know, super important to make sure stays on, or we should redline it out? I think certainly with the review of the job description is important. I think, you know, reviews, I would, I would, I'd like to talk about maybe doing a 360 review for Tom. I know I had one done at work, and found it very useful to kind of hear what people that work for me have to say to help me better lead. So I'd like to maybe discuss that as a potential thing we look at for this year. But anything, any of you guys, any comments on what's on here, before we just kind of move on to goals and more actions?
There are some things that, you know, where we have the other potential responsibilities that, you know, that were under the purview of the Executive Committee, that have to find a home someplace. So, you know, they, one of the things that we had done was the, we had done the training, you know, started doing some training at the meetings, and that kind of went by the wayside. But I've kind of, I've got the information about how I put that together. Another thing that we did was the personal evaluation, and I had compiled the personal evaluation that, from the people that came, that it came in, I think I got them from five people. So I've got that here, if anybody's interested in looking at that. Should have probably sent it out to folks, but I didn't, I compiled that a while ago, so I do have that. But those are some of those things that we, we had done under Personnel, that I think need to find a home someplace, and this is probably a better home than Finance.
Okay, so of those, of those other responsibilities, I guess it would be important to know, like, what are the ones that have to have a home, and what are the ones that, you know, are sort of still optional items? That, you know, whistleblower policy, I don't know, I guess I'm just, do we, are all of these things that we need to make sure that are addressed by this committee, or are there things that can either wait or come off the list?
We don't have a whistleblower policy at this point. I think that it might not be a bad thing down the road, you know, for the Board to look at, but we don't have one.
I mean, it seems to me one, two, three, four, and six are all Personnel Committee? I mean, under the other potentials?
So just at one point, the sheet that you handed out was not the updated one that we made changes to at the Board meeting. At the Board meeting, we actually moved the 360 review up under the annual review, so it wasn't under your suggestion anymore. That's what we passed, and then the Nominating Committee, we also moved up under the, under an actual point, not a suggestion. Ones that they're already doing.
So two and three.
Two and three, I think.
And that was at the October Board meeting, and I sent up that, I sent out that updated one before the last Board meeting with those changes.
No, I'm glad you.
I have the updated one.
So that's how we updated after the October Board meeting.
And you can keep that copy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got it.
I'm sure, I know I have it, I just printed the wrong one. Okay, any comments on this, sort of the roles and responsibilities piece? All right, I'm gonna move the schedule, so we've got, Tom, if we can do the 17th of January, and I've confirmed that that works for the other three members of the Personnel Committee. If you could help us work with that on a location and a time, I think this time of day good for you guys, 10:00. It will not be held at King and Queen.
Y'all can use their room anytime, we'll just go, we'll come to Trish's house. Mary, that'd be all right.
And then we will lock down two more dates, the goal would be to have two more this spring, so probably sometime March, April, April frame, but we'll follow up on those dates later, I just wanted to get the 17th on the calendar now. All right, let's do goals, where obviously this, again, today, more of a discussion than it is to get anything ready for the full Board meeting, but if you look at the, the goals for, we set out for last year, it was five categories with several sub-bullets under each. I thought these were good, as somebody who was here last year. I think that there's an opportunity to make some of these more measurable, and not so sort of yes, no's types of things. But I guess just wanted to kind of kick off some talks about what we're thinking our goals, and frankly, Tom would welcome any of your input. Other thing, Alice, if you could, that's the J D, if you could just, not the day, just review it, just feel like yes, no is still accurate? These things have changed, these things haven't changed?
If we go through. Can we just go through each?
Sure.
Yeah, I want to go through them, yeah.
Larry, prepares proposed budgets for four, now three jurisdictions, coordinating government leaders is needed. Obviously, critical part of the job. I just don't know how you, again, to me, that's a yes, no. Not saying that we can't have yes, nos on it as goals, but.
I mean, that's, do we, do we, not only does he prepare them, but you present them at the various Boards.
I mean, said the various processes with which they get presented, yeah.
Does that mean you don't present at every Board of Supervisor, or?
It means that every locality has their own process.
And timetable.
Yeah, and timetable.
But do you eventually go to each Board of Supervisor, or no?
Again, it depends.
Depends on a year or two, like?
Yeah, it literally does, sometimes, sometimes we present at Hanover, we've not presented at Hanover for quite a while. Gushland does like a team presentation. King and Queen normally do. Either, either nothing, or like an evening where they hear from outside agencies, and you kind of have to sign up, see how it goes.
So we feel like that's a goal that needs to stay, do we, I certainly think that's a critical part of Tom's job. Do we want to, I don't even know how you make it measurable, maybe, like I said, maybe some of these remain as sort of yes, no items.
So prepares and presents proposed budgets for three jurisdictions, and serve, just taking King and Queen out, that one's good, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next one, manages library resources carefully. That's, they.
What, I mean, what all is defined as library resources?
What does that mean? Money, books, what does that mean, in your mind? Everything?
Everything.
People.
Community services.
Yeah, responsible for giving the answer to operating.
Programs.
Well, it's under budget and finance, so you would think it's referring to that, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Fiscal resource, financial resource.
Yeah, maybe under this, it should say manages the fiscal library resources carefully, just to be more specific.
Can we take off carefully? I mean, to me, that's, that's where we get into the, you know, it's not being as measurable, you know, when you, when you have, you know, you're qualifying.
Right.
So, it's, to me, it's an assumption, right?
Yeah.
You got it, it's gonna be carefully, yeah.
I mean, there's some, I would say there's some crossover with your position description kinds of things, and like most descriptions would have things that are, you know, essential or required.
Right.
And then there are other things that come into play, particularly over the years in this position. Projects come up, situations arise, you would not have, you would not have guessed were gonna, you know, happen before.
Follows established financial guidelines and accounting practices. For this, I was, I was gonna throw out the thought of, you know, can we put in an audit sort of date that's reasonable to get the audit finished? That's a measurable.
Can we make that actually a separate one, I think, might be, you know, make it added, add a thing under here.
And so, Tom, I guess if we were gonna put a goal that you felt comfortable and realistic with on the audit, do you have anything in mind that we could put here?
I'm gonna ask for clarification, is this, this fiscal year only, at this point in time?
And since this is for this year, we can certainly qualify it, yeah.
Yeah, I would say for this year.
So fiscal '24, right?
Right.
That's what we're talking about.
'23 is still being finished.
Right, so, but this is our goal for, that we're actually in.
Yeah, direct, the, the goal would be, the Director's goal in FY '24, your auditing.
Correct.
At this point, I have not had more feedback from Mayors, I would, I guess, is a, I mean, it's sort of a run in the dark at the Board.
Yeah, yeah.
End of February.
Well, what would be the realistic goal right now?
What's normal, like, say we weren't behind, say, just rewind five years, what would have been the five, right?
If you're starting on July 1, I would say end of December.
Okay, so we'll qualify for this year.
So, so we would say then, I mean, it's limiting that we're just making the goals for this year, it seems like the goals should be.
Well, I, but we have to establish yearly goals, so I think, I guess next year, we would likely, hopefully, get this done a lot soon, where we're not giving goals halfway through the year, and that, you know, new goal could be established at the beginning of the next fiscal year to have the audit done by, you know, next time.
So what would be a goal for this, realistic, February?
End of February, that gives two, two and a half months.
So audit, fiscal year.
Probably realistically more like six or seven weeks, because the auditors are not gonna be working over the holidays.
So that would.
But in February, still gives you plenty of time, right?
So.
Are you saying we're gonna take the holidays?
We're gonna have to fit into their schedule.
Got it.
Yeah.
So on the.
It's just not, it's not as much time.
Understood.
Sorry.
Let's see.
I was just gonna say, on the goals that I have, if there's a sentence that's marked out that says, "So most recent library audit reports responsible financial management," can, does somebody know why that was marked out, or?
I don't have any idea why that.
I'm not sure either.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Probably, evidently, I don't have that copy.
Oh, yeah, this was just one that I had printed off that I had.
There you go.
So what we're saying is, could we put February 23rd as a, as a goal date?
I actually put March 1.
March 1?
You want to do March 1, that gives you two, two solid months.
Is that based on a Board meeting?
Well, Board meeting is February 28, I was wondering if we could have it completed by the 23rd, but, I mean, if you'd rather do March 1, but that's more realistic.
Yeah, I think that's probably more realistic, just because you got, we have to have the 2022 done in order for them to even move into the 2023.
Well, that, that's done though, right?
Well, that's what we were told. Have you gotten it, I was gonna have.
Yeah, the issue date was a week ago, and like, I still don't have the document.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, yeah, and that, I understand having a date for, you know, for delivery, so to speak, it's just that, as we've, as we've noted, the statements were supposed to have been issued according to the person at charity before Thanksgiving, and like, we're still waiting.
Yeah, I would just say that obviously, we set a target, and there's things that are beyond your control. But actually, just communicate it, you know, hey, we're two weeks behind, three weeks behind, because I do know that you're gonna, you're at their mercy a lot of times, and you can call and do as much as you want, but, but, so just, I say just communicate delays to us.
But it helps to have a goal.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of how I think we ought to look at it.
And we can, yeah, get, shake, you know, rattle their page as necessary.
So just for the minute taking and completion, is that you're gonna add an audit point, an additional?
Yeah, I think additional.
A goal to have the FY 2023 audit completed by March 1st, 2024, and to have any delays communicated as soon as practical. So we have one, two, three, four now under Finance. I, again, if you disagree, fine, but I see D and E that are on here as like standard things, part of his job, more than I see them as goals. Budget adjustments needed are presented, that's to me part of the job. Again, we can leave them in, I think they're kind of just added filler there, but that's just my opinion. Thoughts?
I agree with what you're saying, but, I mean, I would just leave them in.
Okay.
But I totally understand what you're saying.
So we're gonna have six bullets there. All right, moving to library usage, Director advises Board regularly regarding library usage and services.
That's good information.
What does the services piece mean? Library usage is a number of people, right?
Services would be probably, would you think, Tom, would be things like the, you know, story time at, you know, 10 of the libraries, and, I don't know, I'm just off the top of my head, you know? In other words, what are some of the services that are provided?
Programs.
Programs, yeah, that are being provided.
All right, I mean, so are you asking for like a, a focus sort of from month to month, to talk about a service?
Now, just, it says that you would regularly update or advise on library usage and services, and I'm just curious what we consider those services to be, so obviously programming, what are other meeting rooms? You know, how full the meeting rooms are?
Yeah, I mean, regular monthly statistics report has.
Which means we're already doing it, so good.
Yeah.
So we leaving these in?
Do we get a monthly statistics report? Do we get a monthly statistics report? I mean, I would look, I would like to have that, we didn't get one last time, but we have. We, I mean, I've seen one or two, I didn't know, yeah, if we could get monthly, that would be, that would be great.
So we leaving that in?
Well, is there any desire to see an increase in those things? Or are we just saying, you know, this is not what's going on, or is there a desire to see?
Well, regarding library usage, services, and programs, I mean, I think it's important to know how often the rooms are used, just in general, how valuable it is to the community.
Are there any other services outside of programs and meeting rooms that are on that statistic?
Visits, library programs, outside programs.
And does usage include the hotspot use?
I mean, we, there is a measure for that, that's not reported in the monthly statistics.
Yeah, I'd like to know that, I think that's important, too.
Have you ever had a goal towards increasing library usage in general? I mean, not that you, I don't know how you would even do that as a Director, but I'm just curious. Historically, have you ever had goals of like getting more people through the door, more, you know, circulation types of stuff?
So, I mean, we do, Hanover usually asks us for projections with usage numbers. One of, one of the things that I would kind of suggest is that basically when there's been like no new money going towards like books and materials, then, you know, are you expecting that number to increase? And we've basically gotten increases in budget for sort of essentials, merit, and like health insurance, so. So if there isn't a, if there isn't a service increase, then I am pretty conservative, you know, that I would guess. That said, I mean, we have been moving the circulation number ahead. There are other numbers that, some, some numbers are more meaningful, I guess, I would say, than, than others. Visits, I think we're looking into that as a process to try to see if something, we're missing something in our, in our door count process, and our library, library card users, to, to make sure that the reporting is correct. Because those seem to be sort of, they're not, they're not moving up with circulation, and, you know, questions about like, well, is it digital circulation or print circulation? And the digital circulation isn't moving sort of like so fast that you would still have people coming in, and people using, and particularly people using their library cards, because they have to use their library card to get the digital materials. So, you know, reporting, the whole process is always, I'm gonna say tedious, you know, looking at the details, making sure that the things are being recorded, that you expect. We had a little bit of that discussion in talking to King and Queen, because they just thought, you know, it could be just this report, and, you know, you just, you just push the button, and it'll automatically run, and that's, that's not how that works. You have to, you have to be looking at the parameters kind of all the way through to try to make sure that you have the right measures. So, you know, that's kind of where it's at. I continue to be conservative with our CIRC numbers going up. I don't know that we have a basis for predicting an increase, say, in door count, unless there's going to be some other, you know, supporting change that would be made.
Like summer reading program, there's always a big drive to, you know, get kids in the door, yeah.
We have a, when, and I didn't realize this. Yeah, right. When we were, when you were pulling the report for King and Queen, we have a company that keeps our, our data that comes out, our numbers that come out, is that, am I saying that right?
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
Is that Envision? Do they do the, don't they do the?
It is not.
Who?
It's a company called Orange Boy.
Orange Boy.
Yeah, and they, they do collect as much information as we can send them to kind of aggregate it to tell us more about how people are using the services.
Maybe what we could do, if you're, you know, if we're interested in that kind of report of what the use, you know, is the usage increasing, you know, and, and, you know, where is it increasing? Is it increasing in electronic, is it increasing in, you know, people walking through the door? Maybe what we might want to do is think in terms of parameters for a report that we want Orange Boy to produce for us, you know, for this next year.
Like a template set.
Yeah, yeah, they, and it costs money to do that, you know, to ask them to, you know, take the parameters, you know, all the information we're sending, and pull these pieces out, and put them into a report that makes sense for what we're looking for. Because that was one of the concerns with the King and Queen, you know, we weren't sure we could pull out what they wanted just simply because we didn't have a report like that coming from Orange Boy, so, you know, I don't know.
That wasn't actually, those were, those were reports from the ILS that were used for that, and not.
Not from Orange Boy. But it, you know, if we, if we really truly are looking at something like that, we've got, you know, again, it's not, it, it costs money for us to do this, but, you know, if it's a valuable, if it's valuable information to us, you know, we certainly could take a look at creating something like that.
Would it be clearer to see what we already have before we look at adding on or removing?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Seems like the cost, correct me if I'm wrong, it could be, but is, in the initial setup of it, if we created it, or had them create a template, they could populate easily, seems like that, that would be the initial cost? If we knew what we wanted, we say we want this, 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 and this every month. As long as the template's created.
Then, yeah, the cost is the creation of the template.
So I think some of the things that I would offer back as feedback is, what, what is the Library Board's goal in looking at some of this stuff? And, and what is the goal, like, what is the goal for the library? We, you know, we've talked a lot, I've talked a lot about library circulation, and I talk about that because we're doing pretty well with it, number one, but it's important, because if you ask somebody about the public library, what do they think of when they think of the public library? They think of borrowing materials. And if we, you know, if we didn't have the positive numbers that we have, you know, how do you go back to any of the Boards of Supervisors and say, well, our, our, our collection circulation has gone down 10% a year for the last three years, but we'd really like you to give us, you know, X amount of dollars to do anything. And so we're, you know, I think we're in a good spot, I mean, I think that proved true when we were asking for the additional salary money a couple of years ago, to be able to make some directional choices this way. Our circulation is going up around 5% or 6%, and you may not think that that's a great number, but statewide, the average is about a 15% decrease, has been, so we're really about 20 points above. And, you know, then, what, like, what do we want, how do we want to expand, how do we want to improve? That's really some strategic planning. That's really some strategic planning kinds of things, I think. I don't know that we need to go out and get new reports because I'm not sure what you're looking to see.
I was just going to say, you know, do you get, I mean, are there things that are being asked of you when you're at the, at these different meetings with the, you know, with the government people at the different entities, um, that, you know, they ask, well, do you have this statistic? And you have to say, no, I don't have that. I, we, we collect this information, but I don't have it in a report. I, you know, those are the kinds of things that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there is, um, a, you know, anything like that that I've been asked. I've not been able to provide. The question is, like, you know, we're not, we're not regularly publishing, so to speak, the difference between our print and digital circulation. I, you know, and I, and I think I'd sort of say, how, like, how does that help you, you know, in your decision making? Happy to, to try to provide you some of those numbers. We do look at it internally. We look at a lot of things internally, but, you know. Uh, my, my example would be, um, like on the list of warrants. We have the, we have the list and I can see the amounts. So like, I can see, you know, are they over five or are they over 10? And to me, taking the time out to say if these were the four, five transactions that were over 10,000 doesn't really tell us a whole lot different about the, about the warrants. I, I just would like to be able to help, help you understand and help provide information in a way that is usable for us.
So, go ahead. I was going to say, I think for me, the digital versus print, um, piece of it is about trends and where things are going with lib, with library usage. Um, I would also like to see it in comparison to what's spent on those areas. So here are our digital circulation and this is the outlay for those digital circulations. Here is the print circulation, here's our outlay for that. I think that's kind of more pick, big picture board, where are we going? Um, with our locations and, and vision. And I, I actually think that needs to be one of the goals, um, is to update our, our vision and direction document. I think the last, the most recent one we have is, um, expired in 2020. I think was made in 2015. So like part of that, figuring out where you're going. And I, I think the digital piece is important because it does reflect where library services go. And if you're saying it's not really exploding that much, that's good to know. You know, the buildings are still relevant, investing in the buildings and having good places. People want to come, that continues to remain relevant. So that's why I think those numbers are important.
Well, I think the numbers are important because trend, that's a very important word. And, um, I don't think we have to be in any way, um, I would think that we're going to see a decrease in physical circulation. I, I just think that's the trend. But I think that as libraries evolve to meet the require, or the, the goals of a new trend is to bump up the programs, to bump up the, um, and still make it a, an attractive place that people want to go for a variety of reasons, not only which is to check out a book. Because, I mean, I personally now almost do electronic circulation exclusively. And I love the library for that. And I think that's more of where people are going. And so we have to be able to, when Goochland, Hanover or King William asked for this information, I think we should be at the ready to give it to them and not have to reduce our expectations financially because the library can still be an excellent meeting place. The, the programs, I mean, the programs at Goochland are fantastic. And just be more of a, I just think that the library is going to have to, to pivot some in terms of its concept maybe? And that, you know, the data will speak for, the data's going to speak. And I, and I, you know, for us to not imagine that circuit, physical circulation is going to drop is, I think, naive. But I don't think that that should impinge on the effectiveness in the need for the library. I, I would hope anyway. I just think as the future goes, we're going to be looking at more programs, more services, maybe, and more digital circulation.
Having this kind of information is the kind that helps us sell who we are. And, you know, what, what's really good about having the library in your community. You know, it, that does help. One of the things I was going to ask, is there anything, Tom, that we would, would have been helpful from this information for the audits? Was there anything that we could have pulled better, you know, more logical way or something for, for the audits that would have helped move them along? I don't know, I'm just, I'm asking.
I mean, the, the audit doesn't look at the performance.
It doesn't look at any of that? Okay, okay.
It's strictly a.
Financial.
Yeah.
Okay.
A reporting.
So to, to try to kind of put out maybe an action or just put a bow on this. You have circulation, correct? I mean, that's a pretty easy number for you to pull, right? But you, it's harder to break it down, digital versus print.
No, we, I mean, we, we do, we do get it, it gets aggregated that way. I think taking time and then sort of creating reports differently is, is what would be the time piece.
Well, what if we were to create the template? Say, these are the bullet points we want on the template, keeping it as simple as possible. And then finding out from Orange Boy what the cost would be so we actually get this started. You know, like get this moving. So, um, if we knew we wanted, you know, physical, digital circulation, programs and services offered, meaning, you know, what programs are offered in each branch? Uh, how many rooms are, and I don't know if Orange Boy does this, how many rooms are reserved? Uh, I mean, how many people are coming in to work at the library? How many people are coming in to, you know, story time or chess classes or bridge classes? Or, you know, all the things that the library offers. And I think it's, I think the report would be incredibly impressive because I don't think people realize how much the library offers.
I agree.
And I think that the, you know, supervisors would be, if they were to be asked this informa, I mean, if, if you said the Hanover asked for it, um, I can't believe that Goochland and King William don't, but.
They, they ask us to give them a projection.
A projection, but this, for me, this is.
Pre-measurements.
This is important data.
Circulation.
Circulation, I think, um, door count, I think they might still ask about PC usage.
Yeah, well, I think that that, they need to revisit that as well because I think the trends are going to be, once again, it's a lot more about a gathering spot, the program, the services and the digital part of it. So if a template were to be created and, and nothing complicated, even, I know everything is complicated, but just usage, print versus digital, programs, you know, literally the programs that are offered, the classes, the programs. And services like rental.
So this is the statistic, one of the statistical reports you handed out in September. Is this, how is this generated?
Information from pretty much every department is aggregated together to assemble that information.
Okay, so this, this is you, your staff working on putting this together? This isn't like a, a printout that you get? But you're collecting information from all the branches? You put down your numbers, you put together the Excel spreadsheet and all that kind of stuff?
Compiled, created, yeah. I, I, I think that, um, I think that it would be probably just more appropriate for us to be able to provide you with more in-depth reporting from what we already have before we try to go outside. Because I think that, I don't think it's quite as simple as, as you think.
Oh, it never is.
To do that, and, and that way, if we can do that, then you can kind of see what some of the variables are that we have to, um, choose as we're creating reports. And a lot of the variables that we end up choosing, I dare say, are because we also have to report this information to Library Virginia. And Library Virginia has to report it to IMLS federal level. Because like the, how you measure active cardholders has, it's the same across the United States for, for what that period of time is that makes an active cardholder. So the measurements are hopefully more uniform. There's still, you know, plenty of recording problems with that. And then, and then if there's something that you think is missing from what we're doing, then we could, we can have that conversation and see what we need to do to improve it.
So, like, how much time do we, you know, because the last thing I want to do is have us, ask your staff to spend days, weeks, hours putting reports together. But, you know, if it was a two or three time a year case of that, you know, say, hey, we would love to have these reports again in fiscal year, maybe one time during the middle, one time in the spring, you know what I'm saying?
Um, I think, I think once we know what we're reporting, then it becomes much easier to, you know, to report on the, on the periodization. Periodization isn't the, the challenge, I think. Asking, sort of asking the question so that there's some consensus about, say, difference between, um, print and digital. You know, Mr. Makler's thinking about, you know.
Right.
That's kind of, I think that's where the, some of the lift is here.
So I guess between now and January 17th, um, I mean, we need to, as a group, decide the most important things that we want reported. And, and then maybe you can come back with us on the 17th and say, this is what we think we can do with the time associated or, you know, this is a pretty ridiculous ask and it's not going to happen. Is that reasonable?
I, by the 17th?
I'm not asking you to give us the information.
No, it's actually new for us to.
For us to, to tell, kind of tell you the things that we want. You tell us.
That would be a fine step.
You tell us how long you think this is going to take.
Because some of my, some of my same staff that would be helping with that would be helping.
Understood.
Oh, that's right, January's unusually busy.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, this, this isn't, this isn't the vacuum.
Yeah, it could be us as a committee coming up with, these are some things that, you know, and then from that we can say, well, we've got a list of 15 things. Now let's narrow it down, you know, to which of the five most important things we would like. Just to, for us to begin to start looking at some of those, um, statistics that are coming out that, you know, that could possibly affect the building of new libraries. You know, what are, you know, what, what kind of facilities would you need based on the statistics that we've been able to pull, you know, in the last couple of years? So I think it's, I, I think it's a good jumping off place. I think it's a good start. But I think as far as coming up with info that we would like, I think that's more us than you needing to worry about it at this point. And then you can say to us, no, no way you can do that.
But, I mean, I would kind of appreciate being part of the discussion to hear.
Oh, absolutely.
Background pieces.
Yeah.
And, but yeah, it's, I mean, it's, we're happy to, we're happy to share that. Um, the, and the long, the long range plan is definitely something that we.
I wrote it down, yes. Needs to be on our document.
And that's a, that is another fairly large project. One of the things that that would include would be customer feedback, you know, for what's working and what's not. Some of the performance measures in 2023, if you're going back, you know, a couple of years, you know, the feedback into the pandemic period. And that has been, you know, as you know in your own lives, that's been a big change. And so, I mean, I think, I think some of the, like visitor camp, I think people's habits have changed because they quit coming. And I'm not quite sure how we get them to come back. That's always, it's always harder to get them to come back.
Is, is there any way to quantify people who just use the library to come in, sit down and read a paper and don't use their card?
It's your door count, right?
Well, you would see them in door count, but the door counter doesn't know if they are just sitting down to read or if they're doing any other activity. So that's, the things that we have the best information about are the things that you use your card for.
Sure.
People don't need to use their card to come in the door, they don't need to use their card to attend a program.
But the fact that the program exists, at least that's quantifiable. And they probably have numbers about attendees.
We, of course, do, yes, yeah. I, I think one of the more difficult questions to answer that I've heard is how many, how many bridge programs are there? Because we don't, you know, I can tell you the programs that are at Goochland, but we don't have a category where it's like, well, we need to get an extra bridge program in a Goochland, I mean, it's just, but, I mean, we know they're adult or young adult childrens.
Yeah, I don't know that we have to get down to that.
But I think we need to identify the metrics that are going to advance, advance our counties respectively to continue to invest in the library and want to invest more in the library. So what, what are the metrics that they want to see? And if we're already giving them that, maybe we just build upon it a little bit. I mean, to me, it's circulation for sure, it's foot traffic. I don't know if PC usage matters, um, but I do, I do agree that it's important to see the breakdown of digital and print. Not, not to dismiss what you're, what you're saying, but I don't think Hanover cares, frankly, how many kids were in the kids program. And I'm not saying it, and I'm not, but I'm just saying, like, if that's really hard data to get, is it worth the, the time invested in it?
Not so much how many kids, but just this program, this program, this pro, you know, that, just listing the programs, bridge, chess, story time, blah, blah, just not getting down into the numbers. I suppose the libraries have that, but the fact that the program exists and continues to exist, you know, season after season indicates that there is interest.
Well, and programs do drive circulation because it's a way to get people into the library. So and once you're in the library, you're more likely to check books out as well.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So next time you want us to come up with some of the things that we, you know, we think might be info that would be beneficial. To the board for.
So Jen, the, the January 17th meeting.
Yeah, the January 17th meeting, yeah.
So when it says business, this is your door count, is that correct?
Correct.
And this is active cardholders?
Yes.
What, what is the definition for active cardholder?
Use the card in the last three years.
Okay. So it has nothing to do with your, with the Pumunki Regional Library renewal process that happens once a year?
It does not.
Okay.
We don't, and it's not a rolling. It's a, you know, we measure it June 30th, you know, how many did you have?
Okay, all right, let's move on to number three, um, working with the board. Director regularly meets with and advises board and guides a board in decision making, establishes goals for maintaining proven library and library for your services. Let me clear cut, all of these I think are. I would, I would like to add a fourth that basically says director implements board approved policies. For instance, we did that, what was it, the reconsideration? You know, it's now, once we pass something as a board, it's on Tom to make sure it's implemented. It doesn't, when I look at these three goals, it doesn't really reflect anything along those lines.
Okay.
Position description.
I mean, in some ways, your position description and your goals should kind of line up.
Yeah, it says in here, it does say administered, administering adopted policies. Anything else anyone wants to change added discussion on number three?
We, on C, um, we said provides the information packets, which you do, Tom. You send it to us, send us information. Do we, um, I guess we have in here during the preceding week when possible. I'm just thinking of, making it measurable is what I was trying to think of.
Well, no later than the Friday before the meeting or no later?
No later than maybe Monday before the meeting. What do you think? Because I know what it's like trying to get information. Because I know what it's like trying to get information out.
Is it hard to get the information to us the Friday before the meeting? Is that?
I, I mean, I think, I think Friday is more appropriate in terms of sort of the number of business days before the meeting, but also because. My, I thought that you would have more time.
Yeah, I, I would love, I mean, the weekend is when I would get to, if we could maybe shoot for that, the Friday before the meeting.
That just gives us a measurable piece.
Yeah, yeah.
Either Friday.
Four A, I'll let you read it yourself. You don't need me to read to you. We talked about, um, long range plans. I don't know if this would be an opportunity to put a goal in to update long range plan by X time period? That gives us a measurable, I don't know, Tom, thoughts?
And I actually put it down. I've been, I've started a running list of things that people are bringing up that, you know, we need to try to accomplish. As a board and I just put that down as one of the things to put in that list. So I, you know. We definitely need to address that this year.
The long range plan.
Yeah, the long range planning.
What does that process look like as far as of time? Sure, it's very.
I, I think, I think you would want to have a twelve month period to, to do that.
Yeah.
Once you've established what all you want to be including in it.
What could be in here would be that, that, to make it something that can be measurable for this would be that. We begin that process this, before the end of, end of June this year, that, that we start. The process of creating a new five year plan. And I, I don't know, I think that's more than just saying, yeah, we're going to create a five year plan. It's got to, you know, there's got to be some.
Well, what we could do is maybe send out a blast email to send your thoughts on a five year plan and then have a workshop on it.
Yeah, I think it's going to have to have, you know, at least one work meeting, I think.
To get everybody's kind of to think about it, send their thoughts, compile that, and then that gives us kind of an outline for a workshop.
When was the last one done?
The last, the last plan was from two thousand sixteen, about twenty twenty. And then with the pandemic.
Then the pandemic hit, we didn't do anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, but also the, the data that we're going to get will be very helpful.
Yes.
In the long range, yes.
And that's something to think about when you're coming up with your list of things you'd like.
All right, anything else on number four?
I don't know if this comes under this, but. I guess I, the library closure schedule, but we talked about anticipating the holiday. Closure slash pay in advance for next year so that we wouldn't have to have a last minute discussion. Would that fall under here?
It, it would, but all right, at this point, next year, because I mean, we've already, it's kind of done.
I mean, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We've already done it. So, yeah, no, I think it actually needs to be part of next year's.
Part of next year. So just so the, the staff knows, we know, everybody knows that it's just.
That's on my list.
Oh, there you go, okay.
It's on the list that I started, yeah.
Was everybody happy they got it?
There were a number of comments from staff.
Comments?
Appreciating having what they are.
That's good.
Responded to our, our email.
That's good. Very good. Number five. I don't see a lot of needs to modify it, but. Okay. Anything that we think we should add? And again, we're not, nothing's actionable today, so it can just be discussion. But anything on the goals that, like a, an additional section that we want to think about? Okay.
So I, I, I know you gave Tom a copy of his job description. I, I would love to know if you feel like there's anything that you do that's not in there? Or if there are things in there that you feel like you handed on to somebody else? Because I'm sure this was written in ninety seven. I'm sure your job has evolved since then. Obviously it's a little spurty right now, but it would be personal job description.
Sure.
I do have either now.
Okay. That's okay, that's okay.
Oh, is this from the?
I just printed this from the website.
From the, oh, from the website, okay.
And I guess for me, another piece of it is there are a couple of things in that job description. If you feel that they are still part of your purview, they're not really reflected in, in the goals. That the board is evaluating you on. Could I see it just a second?
Yeah, sure.
So the ones that I'm referring to is, we don't have anything about like personnel policies, I don't think. Or interviewing, hiring, evaluating, kind of that piece of it, but person, like more the interaction with personnel. Handling staff and patron complaints, problems and concerns. And then we do talk about your relationship with, or that you're informing the governing bodies, but in the job descriptions it says maintaining excellent relationships between the library and the county and town. So I don't know if there's any way to. Incorporate any of those pieces into your goals.
If we do a three sixty evaluation, if we do that where we're actually working, you know, we're interviewing, you know, library personnel. I, it's, there's more of a possibility to be able to add something like that. I think that was one of the concerns in the previous. Tools that we had used for evaluation. That was a concern. People kept saying, well, I can't, I can't answer this because I don't have any idea what, you know, the people who actually work at the libraries are thinking. You know, so, but if we did do the three sixty. I, I'm, I'm assuming there are three sixty evaluation tools out there.
Yeah, no, I, when I brought that up, I would not expect we really would have any involvement in the process other than helping set it up and then let someone else implement it. And then we would just get.
We get the feedback, but at least we have some information.
I mean, I know that that's when my company did it. We, there was somebody that, so an outside firm sort of ran the whole thing.
Do you have a price on that?
No, but I'm going to work on that between now and our next, uh, January meeting.
In the past with the Personnel Committee, we were trying to size things down rather than adding a lot of. Lot of extra, yes, yeah. So I'm just saying that was our goal then. I, I don't know where we want to be with it now.
All right, any others, anything else on the goals before we do other business?
I haven't looked into this, but Mrs., I had asked Mrs. Young if there were past directors' goals. And just looking at this twenty twenty one, these are very specific goals, like we'll, special projects. We'll serve as PRLs represented with those from Hanover County and Mosley Architects on the planning and design of the new Montpelier branch to ensure that the building meets the library's space. Deliverable, completion, construction plan specifications for the building by June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. So, I mean, I know you said the, the word, the Personnel Committee decided to get less specific. Is that what you're referring to? Instead of having those very specific goals?
Well, what's even so much very specific.
The goal was to make it measurable.
Less, yeah, make them, make them, well, we talked about making sure that they were measurable, but we also talked about the fact that, that it was too many.
It was eleven.
Yeah, but, you know, I think, and we even got up to, I think, thirteen in one year.
Well, because not reading that or anything, that sounds to me like it's kind of edging into micromanagement.
Yes.
And that's not where we need to be.
Yeah.
It's, the only thing that is a bit more onerous, you know, as opposed to that isn't, that wouldn't be under the sizing things down would be. The gathering of more data for a long range plan purposes. Other than that, I mean, I'm all for staying lean and mean and not micromanaging.
So do you feel things, like there are obviously a lot of projects this coming year with like King and Queen branch closing and those kind of things? Is that, those are not things that you want to have in an evaluation?
I think they come up in the evaluation as you're, you know, as we're talking about, now, I don't know about the King and Queen. But, you know, when we're talking about the usage, library usage, when we're talking about, I'm trying to think, building projects.
Yeah.
Are, fall under what's in here and I think.
So you feel like they're addressed already in your, in the goals? Yeah, definitely that. The MOU, I think, addressed King and Queen. Now, if for some reason, things just go south and it's a total mess and whatever. The timeline isn't met, then we'd hear about it, right? And then work on it, but I don't think we need to say, well, you got to have, you know, this amount of books out by January fifteenth and this, you know what I mean? Like, it's just, you know, it needs to be done and just do it. I know, and we don't, and we don't need to get involved in that level of minutia, but, I mean, MOU states what's going to happen. And I believe there are dates involved in that already, and so we just, you know. I guess we'll find out if there's a, a problem.
Well, I think like one of the, one of the challenges of the library is that you don't really have control over a lot of things that happen. You know, you've had limited ability to figure out what's going to happen with King and Queen. We've got a, a deadline really for moving out at this point in time, but there's going to be, you know, several probably months of work. As we get rid of the collection, figure out what to do to process that. Have you set the opening date for the Montpelier branch? No, because that's not in your purview. You know what I mean? But we'll, we as staff will be, you know, part of that process and reacting to other people setting deadlines. And without any regard to the idea that we're also opening another branch in West Point. And that's, I mean, that's just kind of how the world always works.
Yeah.
So. I don't think those will all happen by June thirtieth.
But I think as you, you know, as we're doing, as we as the trustees are doing the evaluation in May and June. Those are the kinds of things that play into what the verbiage is that you, you write to go with your.
Right.
You know, this is my justification for what I've said, you know, this is what happened with this, this is what happened with this. So, um, that's why I think it's important that trustees take this seriously when they do it, you know, it's not. It shouldn't be, you know, one word sentence on each one of them, it, you know, it, it needs to be some real solid justification behind. What is set, so.
All right, we get on goals. Okay, other business, I just made a couple of notes I wanted to ask, and one of them's on the sheet. Tom, how hard would it be for you to give us a up to date organizational chart at the library? Just so we have a better, I know for me, I don't have a very good sense of who, where, what. Can you provide us a, a, a chart? And, and then I guess within that, if there was like new full time positions that you were, would be wanting to advocate for, moving forward, things like that, maybe that would be a good time to rotate them. Like if you have gaps or, or, or needs. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Tom, do you ever, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just done.
You're done? Do you ever? Put together? How do I just, how do I say this? Just a, a, a list of what you need from the board that you're not getting? Do you have a wish list or a, a list of how things, how you think?
It's dangerous.
I mean, I know, I'm just saying, I don't know.
Maybe this is my.
Five million dollar check at the end.
Yeah, I mean, I'm being maybe naive and stupid here, but I mean, is there things that? Would be more helpful as a library director? Do you, you know what I mean? Like, do you ever put out anything to the board from the, you know, the director saying this could?
I think, I think from time to time, the board has, we've had some of those discussions within, you know, within the meeting. And maybe this would be a good, a good time, you know, focus on the board to, you know, sort of talk about some of those stuff.
Yeah, you know, because it does work both ways. I just wonder if there's areas where you would like to kind of. Share your thoughts. Good, bad, or otherwise.
The only other one that I was curious about was sort of the annual review process for the staff, kind of how that's done. Process timing, is there a standardized, you know, like just a, a little bit of background into that process would be very beneficial.
So there is a standardized evaluation form. It's been a number of years ago. We, we basically are, are following something that Hanover uses. It's not a hundred percent the same, but it's pretty close. But the timeline on that, in some ways does end up following Hanover because you've got to have, got to have a lot of paperwork. In time so that like if we're doing merit on July one, they have time to process all of that.
Right.
It, it sort of as an aside, it has not been unusual since I've been here that, um, the board's evaluation meeting hasn't been returned in time. For that, and so that would get processed, say, in August, in October, you know, with like a back adjustment. Your timeline has been a different.
Can we get in sync with their timeline? I mean, is, would that, is that something that we could do?
You, you could, but that would mean you probably need to be done with my evaluation on June first.
Can we do that?
I don't see that.
I was going to say, because I think we've had it June thirtieth before, but yeah, June first.
It's not a, it's not a big deal. It's, but it's just always something, we, we always need something to be in the notes or something signed from the board chair. I, I can authorize the rest of the staff for their raise.
Can't.
Authorize for my raise.
So it would be good if we could get in sync with it, you know. This year may not be the year.
Yeah, maybe not this year.
You know, just because we're so far behind people already, but, yeah.
But there is, there is a regular form, how the branch managers start working on that typically, or departments start working on their evaluations in April. They kind of come up with a process in advance, so that we haven't done it in time. There's time for the supervisors to meet with the employee to go over the evaluation as well.
Could you share one? Like, just a sample, I'd just be curious to look at it. And then the second question is. If the, if the merit amount is to say five percent, is it a yes, no? Or is it a yes, but you're getting three and maybe somebody else gets seven, or is it typically a blanket? They get it or they don't?
Again, we typically follow what. Again, we typically follow what Hanover is doing with that.
What does Hanover do?
Well, and it varies. Sometimes it is one option.
Okay.
But other times, if you have somebody who, you're trying to get them to improve their performance, that, you know, they may not get a full merit. Sometimes there is opportunity for people to, you know, to exceed, to get rewarded for it. And that, and the two of those are not necessarily tied. The work they need exceeds with the effort that we put forth to get the increases, to pay our folks, pay our staff. Two years ago, we followed what the county was doing, and we did not award this, as a, as a preference. People, people may have gotten the rating, but that was their evaluation. Merit was a different process. We also program if you're coming to us, you know.
Middle of the year.
Yeah, you know, on, on April 2nd.
Yeah.
You're not gonna be able to come in January to have.
So, when we did 5% across the board for the budget, does that mean that there's still some people that will get evaluated at 3%? Does 5%, is 5% a suggestion or is it a?
So, 5% was the number that we used in the budget, which is.
In the budget?
A, a plan for how you think things may go.
Right.
Implementation is different. You've got 130 people. If we're doing below meets and exceeds, I guarantee that there'll be some offset for that.
Okay.
There'll also be people who will, you know, will have quit between July 1st and.
Sure.
Devaluation period and their replacement won't get anything. It, it works out.
Okay. So it's just, that's just a budget number? I was thinking that it was a rubber stamp, like 5%.
It is not.
It is not, okay.
We had talked in the October meeting that it's also dependent on what Hanover actually does, right? Because Hanover hasn't decided what they're doing for their employees. Is that correct?
I thought they had. I thought that's how we got the 5%, no?
Well, so correct. They, I mean, they have not. We got the 5% number from them, that's what they were targeting at the time that we needed to put the budget together.
Oh, so they.
You know, the, I can't tell you what's gonna happen with the economy. I cannot tell you what direction county staff are gonna be getting from their board of supervisors.
So when, so they gave us the 5%, when did they decide for that? I mean, when they put their budget together?
Okay. So the 5% comes from Hanover administration, right? And it's still the board of supervisors that needs to.
Technically from, from their finance department, they have, they have multiple budget staff. And so that was the number that the budget staff were able to provide back when we were asked.
For budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So there's, there are a lot of variables in that. I would also add, I don't know what's gonna happen with the, say, Virginia's budget over the spring, which also can have significant local impact to what they may or may not do. I, I wouldn't be all that surprised that Hanover ends up probably, like if things are working well, the economy is not tanking, I wouldn't be surprised that Hanover might try to go higher like to six, their facing sort of salary pressure from the neighboring localities. You might have seen in the news, Henrico has $2 million set aside to provide their staff with a $25,000 like stipend for a house payment. And I suspect some of that is behind Hanover's trying to be a little more generous with these holidays now. It doesn't really cost them more money, but it's something they can do to kind of leave a warm position with their staff. And I can tell you, you know, King and, King and Queen has never had a concern about what's happening in sort of the greater Richmond area on, on the budget aspect. They have that concern for their staff and hiring people most certainly, but not with our, our power cost that way. I think King William has had that understanding as well, you know, sort of scaled for quite some time, and Goochlin does, of course, because the majority of the Goochlin staff do not live in Goochlin County, I think they can do. So, so those, like, their number may end up changing, and I, I mean, I can guarantee that if it goes down, they'll be expecting money to go back in their request. They, they may not ask us for it, they may just target a number. And they may sort of like butcher with a heavy thumb, they may target a little bit more and just expect the library to figure things out. But that's, that's sort of those ongoing issues that we have with budget.
I think it was last year in December, they did a one-time bonus.
Yes.
They did, and we did not. And again, part of that was the amount of time that we had in notice to be able to work through.
Just like the project.
My favorite, one year, there was a significant difference in what they determined, you know, five months later in what health insurance costs were gonna be for the next fiscal year. So we received sort of, you know, a bill saying our health insurance was gonna be significantly higher, and we had to go back. That's the only time since I've been here where we ended up going back with a revised budget request to all the localities and worked through that as a process with everyone.
Who is your main point of contact for that kind of information? Is it, is Mr. Taylor meant to be that point of contact to let you know Hanover's doing this or that? Or is it the HR department or?
I would say that, again, it varies. Sometimes I get it from finance, sometimes from HR, sometimes from somebody in the county administrator's office. On a good year, I get it from all three of them. Someone's trying to make sure we know.
Does anybody else have any points of discussion? I, my list has been gone through, so open it up for anything else?
Do you, did, did we decide what we'd like to do with any of this stuff that is coming from the executive committee? As far as, are we gonna try to do the, the re, reestablish the training, the monthly training, the?
Long-range plan we talked about.
Yeah, we've talked about.
Early boards that we've talked about.
What does monthly training look like? What does that, what's that work?
What I did, we decided, I think Mike Smith was the one who really pushed this, and he kept saying, you know, we as a board are not as aware of what our responsibilities are. And we felt like that we needed training, and then it evolved into, well, what we were gonna do is to each month, there would be a specific topic, and I literally used this book. And there would be a specific topic that we would talk about, and we would, we would take like 15 minutes in that board meeting to do that. And I think we did it like three or four times at most, and it just kind of went away.
Did, did it prove to be helpful?
I'm not sure it proved to be as helpful as I thought it was gonna be. I think it would almost be better to do, you know, if we could do a retreat day at some point, that it was a, almost a working day that we sat and we went through, these are all the, you know, this is what we do, the expectations of us as a board, and, and really have a chance to, to talk about what those expectations. 15 minutes and, and people who are not experts on it doesn't, you know, doesn't always offer the best type of training. But it's, there's, there's a tremendous amount of information in here, and I think that it's, it's good that we as, we as board members understand what our responsibilities really are as a board. And, you know, I know that, Tom, you had done the initial training with new board members for a while. I don't know that that's happened in the last couple of years, but we did, well, last, last fall, or not fall, in August, we did the meeting where we did a lot of information that, you know, Dennis shared with us, and Jim shared a little bit with us.
Can I take a peek at the?
Sure, sure.
Well, when I hear training, my eyes glaze over, because I, so I'm wondering if there's a way to do this, really condense it to, so that.
I have a, yeah, I had, this was the schedule that we started out with.
Oh, okay.
Each person, each person had one particular section that they were going to report on. And the, I tried to base it off of who felt comfortable with what, and people, you know, people signed up for particular dates and that kind of thing, so.
Why don't we take a crack at it and see in 15 minutes? Right? I thought.
And it, it was helpful, I think, in some respects. It, it made us look at the book, for one thing.
Well, yeah, and I think there's probably, and actually, I think that's.
One master copy is there.
Your master copy, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know, I'd be willing to take a crack at it if we, you know.
We could reinstate it, I guess.
I, I'm not sure that having, there was a lot of reading being done when that was happening.
Don't wanna do that, yeah.
Maybe if you, maybe if you assigned the reading with in advance with one or two questions, then maybe we could talk about the questions.
So, I mean, like make it an interesting presentation, because training can be so.
Would, would you maybe find that a little more helpful?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and just a brief discussion, but everybody, you know, read this before the meeting, we're gonna have 15 minutes about it, and then move on. At least it's been covered.
And I can, I can do that, I don't mind. You know, I can do it from the perspective as the, as the chair of the board, or I can do it as a member of personnel, however you want to see it.
Where do you think it better?
I think it fits in personnel. I, I think it, it fits better in personnel than.
So we're talking about assigning a board of trustee member to almost present on a topic at our meetings? Is that sort of what you?
Well, I, I think Tom's suggestion is good, is, you know, that we've got the schedule, that we get the schedule, you know, say, these are the pages in this book you need to, you as a board mem, member need to look at. These are two questions that we will discuss during that time, but then we can have one person on the board be the lead for that. Like, I think Mary was gonna do some of the finance stuff, and, you know, which makes good sense, you know, to have somebody who has that background. And then we designate 15 minutes of each meeting that we're gonna do this. And so you've got, what do you got for the January? Oh, we don't have, no, no, this got, yeah, it got through January and February, I didn't even have any, and Julie was gonna do February, obviously, isn't that what you do?
Well, we could, yeah. Do we pick up where you left off or start over?
Start over.
Start over.
I'll start over with it, yeah. And I don't mind taking that on if you want me to, but I'll take it on as a member of personnel, how's that sound?
That's fine.
And I can bring maybe a plan next meeting.
Okay.
On the 17th, I'll bring a plan about that. So, and we can kind of go from there.
I think that's a great idea.
And the other thing, and again, we, we did, and like I said, I did compile what I had gotten from the self-evaluations, but nothing was done with it. And, and there's good information here. I got some good information from different people that had turned in their self-evaluations and things that we as a board, I think it would be good for.
I'm sorry, what is this?
This is the gift that we do one or the other.
The training or that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just for the sake of cutting down on time a little bit.
Yeah.
Was the self-evaluation done at the end of the fiscal year?
Yeah.
Okay, was. So it was done in June?
It was like May.
The board's self, okay, yeah. Was this an evaluation that you created or was it from the book?
Right out of the book. It was right out of the book, right? Straight out of the book, yes. And, and they've got some, and again, like I said, there's good information here and things that I think that we as a Personnel Committee, if we had folks at some point do the self-evaluation, we compiled it and then go through and say, you know, well, take a look at this, there's a real trend here that people are saying this isn't, this isn't going well, you know, or people that really like a particular thing. And like I said, I've got what I compiled here, so you welcome, and I can email this to you if you want it. I had forgotten I had done it. I had put it together, so I printed it off this morning.
I didn't even know about that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah. And it, I think as a board, as a, as a Personnel, it's almost more the information from that would be more helpful for the Personnel Committee to take a look at first and say, okay, these are the trends we're seeing, you know, a lot of people aren't happy with how we're doing this, or they're, you know, a lot of people think we've done a spectacular job on this, you know. So, I think it would be, I think it would be helpful. I agree with Mary, I don't wanna fluff.
Well, the self-evaluation, I wasn't really evaluating with the board. It was just a personal goal.
Right. And personal information of, you know, I felt that we, you know, that we.
Until I looked at that, it was like, oh, well, maybe that's something I should be doing. It hadn't even occurred to me.
Yeah. But I can send this to, to folks if you want to, if you just wanna read through it and see, again, like I said, I think there was some good information in there. So, and then we can make a decision about that.
Can talk about it at the, yeah. Again, our next meeting will be kind of put a plan together for what we want to bring to the full board.
Yeah. It might be, you just decide if you're gonna move it up in the responsibilities and, and put it in sort of your timeline in the next, right?
Yeah. They just need it at home. Someplace to go.
All right, anything else? I think I need a motion, don't I, to, to close the meeting?
I'll move that we close the meeting.